Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here and playing a part in your county government. And as far as elected officials, I don't see any. Glad to have Mr. Eric Johnson. We did have an elected official on the doorway back there, the Honorable Sheriff, Gary Gullidge. So at this time, I will call the March 27 Paulding County Board of Commissioners' work session into order and remind everyone to turn off their mobile devices. And I'd like to have Brian bring forth the citizens wishing to speak. It's always a privilege to have the Chaplain for our Sheriff's Department here. And so Chaplain Joey Meeks, if you would give us a notification and place the flag. As you know, if you take the E out of his first name, you have a good description of him.
Thank you so much, sir, and appreciate y'all letting me come. Let's pray. Father, we love you and again, we thank you for creation. Not only that, we thank you for life and we thank you for eternal life that you offer through your Son, the Lord Jesus Christ. But Lord, we're here today, Father, with our elected officials. I'm praying God that you would touch them. I pray that you'd give them the wisdom of Solomon, Father. I pray God as they deal with the problems and the different things that's in our county. And not only that, Father, that all the good things, the growth and the people that make up Paulding County, which we're so glad to call home, Father. Again, I pray that you'd touch them. I pray for our first responders. I pray that you'd keep them all safe, Father. It's my prayer, Father, that you build a hedge around them. Praying again, Father, that you'd touch them. Bless us, Meeks, in Jesus' name. Amen. All right, salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, before the first print announcement, I'm going to apologize for the openings in the ceiling here, but we are making progress, so pardon our progress. We're going to have a lot better public information system. And I'm told that right now, we are live streaming to the whole world. So Paulding County is further on the map. The minutes, the March 13, 2018 work session minutes, the March 13 board meeting minutes, and the March 21 leadership mini-conference minutes are available for your review.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. Can I interrupt here? I had a slight change to those minutes, if we could. As you all know, I was, I had a scheduling conflict for that mini-conference, and the minutes listed me as present, but they're not. It's just that type of, also, if it's okay with the board, I would like to ask that we split the mini-conference from approval of minutes from the mini-conference from the approval from our last board meeting and work session. Since I wasn't at the mini-conference, I would stay in there, but I would vote on the other, the other minutes.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see a problem with that.
Thank you.
Under our positively Paulding segment today, we're going to get to see the Academy Award winner again here in the Sheriff's Office.
Joey Meeks, I'm the Chaplain of Paulding County Sheriff's Office, also the Secretary of Treasure of Georgia Sheriff's Association's Chaplain.
Chaplain Meeks is an integral part of the Sheriff's Office family. Although he is not a sworn deputy, he has an important capacity and role at the Sheriff's Office.
Well, first of all, we do, you know, Sheriff Phil, first. But then, we also, we do family counseling, we do marriage counseling. The part that we try to do the best is that we try to have Phil's in the family, a lot of our, all.
In our line of work, we do see a lot of different things that most citizens don't see. We see some of the most horrific, terrible things that you can imagine. And being able to cope with those things is difficult. And a lot of times, we can only rely on each other.
When a deputy's called out there, it's usually the worst day for somebody. It's the worst day of their life ever. And you know, especially when these, a business deal with children, we have all problems. They follow their law enforcement, the votes. We have all the things dealing with children, with their fur or whatnot. And by being, being able to help them to express instead of putting all of it.
Working in law enforcement, one of the things that people look to when they, when they see a law enforcement officer, a deputy sheriff, a police officer, is they expect us to have all the answers. They expect us to be there, to be the hero. Well, we're just like anyone else. We're human beings. And we have feelings, we have emotions, we have families. And we hurt too. When we see someone hurting, we hurt. We may not show it right then and there, but when that call's over with and when that situation's taken care of, we've got to, we've got to relieve that stress as well.
When they go on call, it's proven, and I deal with them, the bodily functions may change, and their blood pressure goes up, their adrenaline goes up, their eyesight's better, their hearing's better, their blood sugar's elevated. Everything changes. And you know, once they get home, it takes a while for them to come off this hypoventilating stroke, is what I call it.
So having someone like Joey in place is huge for us because he is, he's there 24/7. He's only a phone call away. Just having him there is a huge resource that our deputies really appreciate and really cherish because he's a, he's a man of God and we know that we can trust in listening to him and know that the things that we tell him are truly confidential. And we know we're going to get good advice from him and talk to him.
What excites me the most is to see a family that's had some trouble get everything patched up and get their family back on track and being happy.
We've got a great Sheriff's Department and Austin County to live in. We're thankful today. Board of Commissioners would like to announce the Robert L. Wilson Scholarship has been awarded to Appraiser Kate Walker with the Tax Assessment Department and Mr. James Stokes to add a little bit more information there. Thank you.
Ms. Kate, if I can get you to come up to the firing squad.
Kate's up here. Funny to say.
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come up and recognize one of our own. We always like to come and spotlight something that's positive within the county, no matter what department it is, especially in the assessment industry. And the GWAO, which is the Georgia Association of Assessing Division, is an organization with over 1,600 members in all 159 counties that was established back in 1948. Mr. Robert Wilson, he was the Chief Appraiser in Gwinnett County for over 22 years and served an additional seven years in DeKalb County. He was the Executive Director, the Secretary of the Treasure with the organization for more than 25 years. He was a pillar of the organization and believed wholeheartedly in the professionalism ethics within the industry. In 2010, Mr. Walker, Mr. Wilson unfortunately passed away. His family, given his deep devotion to the organization, set up a scholarship in his name. The scholarship, it allows a new member to the assessment industry to apply for that scholarship. And what it will do is, is it will give a free trip to the annual conference that's held in Jekyll Island every year. The conference is a three and a half day event. It covers every topic from customer service to legal to open records, the whole gamut of the assessment. And it's really the crown jewel of the organization. We received a call some months back for applicants willing to participate to see if they would be interested in applying for the scholarship. As part of that scholarship, the applicants are required to write an essay suggesting to why they feel like they're the one to receive this scholarship and what professionalism, ethics mean to them in promoting their self within the assessment industry. I am proud to announce that I was, received a phone call a few weeks ago from the Acting President, Ashley O'Donnell, over the organization, that Ms. Kate was awarded the scholarship. Ms. Kate has been with us for, since 2016 and has recently obtained her Appraiser One designation, and she's currently working to progress herself throughout the appraisal industry. We are very proud to have Kate that took the initiative to apply for this and to go before that committee and to be recognized. And once again, Paulding County, we have exceptional team members, not employees, that represent Paulding County and our office. So at this time, I'd like to present this scholarship award to her and ask if everybody would congratulate us.
Now, under invited guests, we're honored to have back in the room President Eric Johnson with the Conference Program Services Team to update us on the jail project.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Chairman. Vow of Commissioners.
How's everybody doing?
Everybody doing good?
Good.
First off, Tabitha, thank you. I was actually trying to figure out, I always get up here and I can't pull up this PowerPoint thing for some reason. It's the simple things that usually get me. Thank you for letting us present the status of the jail program. Let's go to the first page. Not a whole lot's changed since last month, other than we have received a lot of proposals for bids. We'll get into it in a second, but as far as the budget, the budget is still static. We're still expecting to have a GMP of $58 million or less. Talk a little bit about the market conditions, but everything else is what you see from last month. Design's still on schedule. Working with, between our team and the Sheriff's Office has obviously very involved in the review of this design and where we're headed with it. The package, design package was submitted by Wakefield Beasley. Turner has issued all the bid packages through County Purchasing. And they're receiving some bids now, but they'll have to be receiving more in the coming days. Through this process, they will be issuing, there's a lot of questions that are coming back and forth. We're trying to ferret this whole thing out early. But they will be issuing a GMP to the rest of the team, including the Sheriff's Office, on April 12. And what we'll do then is we'll have a host of meetings, days on end, to go through the guaranteed maximum price with the Sheriff's Office to make sure, first and foremost, that we're meeting the program that we said we would meet. Secondly, we'll address all the bid packages, make sure they're scoped correctly, what time of construction. And thirdly, and as important, we'll be monitoring, grading their efforts and their success on local participation. So all three of those will be going on and with the hopes of coming to you on April, or sorry, May 8, with the guaranteed maximum price. There have been times in the past where we may move that two weeks, but that's okay. We're not slated for that now, but we'll address in April meeting, a month from now, where we are in the process. So with all the hopes of finishing up construction by the end of 2019. So that's kind of where we are right there. All the information that we feel is pertinent for the public that we can still find on PauldingJail.com. We had the last one that we recorded last month was February 22, the latest outreach. But we have gotten some calls from some folks who didn't feel like they were in the process. Well, it turns out that a lot of them were at this outreach and Turner Construction has done a very good job in not only hosting these meetings with the chamber, but also sticking around in their pre-qualification package, answer any questions that they may have, take the time that if somebody does want to get involved in this project, they can. And if they don't, as always, my phone is always on, my email. If somebody feels like they need to contact me directly, I have no problem with that whatsoever. And some people get some information and they pass it along and we deal with it. So one thing that we have out right now for bid, we talked about it last month, was the third-party testing. We've got a budget of $750,000. We feel that that is more than generous. We feel it's going to be less than that. And we talked about whether or not the negotiations with the city on their super permits and TAPDs might supplement the budget that we have there. But I know Bruce Coyle and I and the rest of the team have been working with the City of Dallas on it, and they've been great. A couple of things you may want to ask, you know, the steel tariff issue. It's real. I'm not saying it's warranted. There has, we met with some of the major suppliers and they follow us around all over the nation. And the steel that they purchased, they've already got without, with hopes of getting this job or other jobs. So we're not, they've already factored in at the first of the year. Everybody raises their prices in the unit construction. They do it regardless of supplier demand. A lot of that's already in their numbers and we feel like if we're able to get them under contract here next month, that steel tariff issue may not hit this job, but we don't know. But right now, we are pretty strong. Our response is, well, we'll just put the project on hold for two months and wait for all that anxiety in the lead because there's been really no impact on the price of this stuff as we speak. So that got everybody back to the table pretty quickly. Two packages that we've only gotten two proposals on, but they were both good. Two packages are drywall and masonry, but the proposals that we've got for both of them are good, but we're still trying to get some more proposals for both of those. But everything else, we've gotten three or more proposals for all the bid packages. So all in all, things are going very, very well. And I'm here to answer any questions if we have any.
Eric, Commissioner Poundell did an outstanding job helping us acquire land to change the footprint of the jail. It was possibly going to be two stories, and we got to, as the picture showed earlier, change it to one story. I think probably a lot of the staff already knows, but citizens, they might be interested in how that has affected the overall schedule of the project.
Great question. First, it reduced the cost of the facility. Second, from a capital cost standpoint, capital first cost, second thing is operationally, it works much more effective for the Sheriff's Office to run on a single level, have no elevators. Every, the adjacencies work out a lot better. And long-term, maintenance costs typically aren't as much as well. There's less, we don't have any elevators on the project.
Questions, comments? We've given you a little bit more room to work with too, haven't we?
We have. And it's, and it has, and it works a lot better. And we're actually, the connectivity, and forgive me for the road, but the road that's going to be leading from the driver's license, the driver's license. From the driver's license building to Dallas, we're going to have another road that we're going to be cutting in from the backside of the Sheriff's Office. And that really helps so the traffic, a lot of the traffic has been coming through the driver's license and through the back, through the front of the facility. We're also looking for a road from where the visitor center is going to be to that back road as well. So all in all, the site works much easier, it's much more secure, and the Sheriff's Office has the ability to do what it is they need to do a lot more efficiently. And there's still plenty of land for expansion for Phase 2 with no real impact to the surrounding properties.
Lead us a little bit.
Yes, sir. There's plenty.
And on budget, on schedule? No, that's the resource area.
Yes, sir. On budget and on schedule. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. There are no billboards today. Reports from committees, so glad to have Lori Ashmore to update us on the drought situation. Finally, it's changed.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to give a brief update on where we are. Just a reminder, our water come, the Paulding County sits in three drainage basins, the Cusa, the Talalusa, and the Chattahoochee Basin. And our water today comes from both the Chattahoochee and the Cusa Basins. I'm really pleased to see Paulding County in this white section of the drought monitor index. We are out of the drought, of drought conditions, and we have been. And we started 2017 in extreme drought. And drought conditions did improve over the course of the year. Our rainfall was, our, the drought recovery really tracked the rainfall we received over the course of the year. But the issue that we had toward the end of the year was that Lake Lanier levels were not recovering. But the wet weather that we have been, that we have received at the end of the year and the beginning of this year has resulted in the Lanier levels recovering and that we had over the course of one four-week period, the lake, one four-week period, the lake levels rose about four feet to a foot a week. So the Environmental Protection Division did lift the phase, the Level 1 drought response earlier this month for the remaining affected counties in Georgia. And we've returned to non-drought requirements for outdoor water use. I'd like to take a minute and just remind our, remind everyone of what those are. They're actually governed under the Georgia Water Stewardship Act that was adopted in June of 2010. And they're, they allow outdoor watering for planting, growing, managing, maintaining landscaping either before 10:00 a.m. or after 4:00 p.m. So excluding those, the hottest times of the day when you have most evaporation occurring. Who's governed by this? Well, anyone who's receiving water by, from a public water system. So if you're irrigating from the Paulding County water system, you are governed under these requirements. There are some outdoor water uses that are allowed at any time of the day. And I'll just call attention to a couple of those. Hand watering. You're using a watering can or holding that hose in your hand, you can water. Drip irrigation. Food gardens. New or replanted seeds or turf in the first 30 days can be watered at any time. Athletic fields, golf courses. And we, for anyone that's interested, we've got these allowed water uses posted on our Water Conservation Drought Page on the website. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Appreciate you helping.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Larry. Under public participation on agenda items, Mr. Jason Summer, come forward and talk to us about the farm winery, part of a agenda that we have.
Mr. Sheriff, thank you for your time. Allow me to come up here and speak towards this. My name is Jason Summerhour. I incorporated partnership forms in vineyards at the end of 2017 with plans and intentions to establish a farm winery of property that's over on Willow Springs Road. So I'm here in support of the ordinances that the Commissioners and the Gilberts have put forth, and I really appreciate the efforts there. I just wanted to let you know that my vineyard and winery is coming along and there's going to be others. I'm not going to be the last. So, you know, being able to establish these tasting rooms or farm wineries is a big deal in helping us, you know, make back a lot of the investment that takes, takes place in establishing a winery. It brings, you know, it brings a lot of beauty across the county as well. If you've ever been in Napa Valley and seen the beauty there of all the wineries across that region, it's just really amazing. So there are just a lot of, you know, great things that really come along being able to establish wineries and, of course, tasting rooms along with that. So I just wanted to take a moment and ask for your continued support. And the Gilberts, as well as several other vineyards and wineries across this area have been very helpful. So I'll go forward to helping the other wineries and vineyards get established throughout the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You can just get this, Lori Ashmore to allow you to water. Here we go. Four consented items to take action on today. Number one is approve the amendment to the purchase policy to include section competitive negotiation qualifications based, or based selection for projects using federal aid highway program, FAA AXP funding. Number two is to authorize the Chairman to sign a quitclaim deed to Paulding County Hospital Authority for a point 219 acres owned by Paulding County Board of Commissioners in exchange for 0.083 acres of right-of-way, 0.840 acres of fee simple acquisition, 0.240 acres of permanent amusement, and 0.213 acres of temporary amusement owned by Paulding Memorial Hospital at the former Paulding Memorial Hospital campus. Number three is to adopt Resolution 18-13, adopting the Title VI Plan Update for 2018. And number four is to award the direct purchase of pipe for the State Route 92 relocation project to U.S. Pipe and Foundry Company, LLC, in the amount of $1,253,901.60. Any of the Commissioners like to place any of these four items on the regular business? Hearing none. We'll keep them on the consented end and thank the Department of Dits for all the backup material where we could get familiar with those four items. Old business, we have none. New business, discuss action to authorize the Chairman to enter into a contract with heat and lineback engineers in the amount of $119,669.62 for preliminary engineering design services for the burnt hickory road, stout parkway, Brownsville extension intersection improvement project. Mr. Jones?
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Let me give you a little background on this location. It's an intersection located on the Paulding lines. It's a post-three. Over the last three years, the crash history has increased to a corner of the field, something needs to be done due to the conditions. 0.840 acres of fee simple acquisition, 0.240 acres of permanent amusement, and 0.213 acres of temporary amusement owned by Paulding Memorial Hospital at the former Paulding Memorial Hospital campus. Number three is to adopt Resolution 18-13, adopting the Title VI Plan Update for 2018. And number four is to award the direct purchase of pipe for the State Route 92 relocation project to U.S. Pipe and Foundry Company, LLC, in the amount of $1,253,901.60. Any of the commissioners like to place any of these four items on the regular business? Hearing none. We'll keep them on the consent agenda and thank the Department of Hits for all the backup material where we could get familiar with those four items. Old business, we have none. New business, discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into a contract with Heath and Lineback Engineers in the amount of $119,669.62 for preliminary engineering design services for the burnt Hickory Road, stout parkway, Brownsville Extension intersection, the improvement project. Mr. Jones.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Let me give you a little background on this location. It's an intersection located on the Cobb-Paulding lines. It's a post-three. Over the last three years, the crash history has increased to a point of relief. Something needs to be done with the conditions. We've contracted with Heath and Lineback and also been in conversation with Cobb County on what to do as a temporary measure. We're going to take that intersection and convert from a two-way stop control to a all-way stop control as a temporary measure. But a long-term solution is needed to really address the traffic flow and safety out there. Negotiated with Heath and Lineback provided us a roundabout control designed for that location. It's in the amount of $119,669.62. We've been contacted by GDOT and they've informed us that there is money in the off-system safety program. This year, we can deliver this project in the October-November timeframe. So we will take this project, have the plans ready, the right-of-way needed, working in conjunction with Cobb County, give the project to GDOT, and they will construct it and manage it. So it's a really good deal for us to get this project ready. That's about all I have on that. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
George, I support this, and I know what you're talking about. I go through the intersection all the time. I've talked to a few people out there. Maybe you put signs up because you know they cut through. Traffic gets pretty fast. They do have to come to a stop now if it crosses an overburden. I'll put a roundabout, but if roundabout goes up, those people won't have a reason to slow down so much.
No, but I mean, when you're going slow enough, if you're going to a roundabout, your speeds are lower, you know, around 15 miles per hour or so. So it's much safer than right now where you've got people going, it's posted at 45. You know, I think the 85th percentile speeds, we measure at 48, 49 miles per hour. And as you know, there's a little bit of a site issue looking to the north on both sides of South and Brownsville Extension. So I think this, roundabout is probably your best solution, not just because Scott Green loves roundabouts, but just because you know, you're going to reduce your conflict points and you're going to slow speeds. So I think this is really the best thing that I can come up with an exception. The traffic is still not slow speeds, but.
We might need to put signs that say, "Slow children of play" or something.
We can look at every precaution.
Scott, do you just stay on that roundabout for 15 minutes? Ron told me not to try to be funny, right? New business number two is to discuss action to approve the chairman to enter into an agreement with Love &amp; Contracting Company Incorporated for the fiscal year 2018 countywide shoulder maintenance services contract for the same contract unit rates in the previous contract. In the amount of $770,477.70. The contract provides multiple cycles for mowing, trimming, and litter pickup for up to 550 miles of county roads and 21 miles of four-lane state routes.
Thank you. Again, you know, this is Love &amp; Contracting. We've had a contract with Love &amp; now for the last seven years. The price, like I said, is $770,477.70. And it does provide for mowing, trimming, and litter pickup on 550 miles of county roads. That'll be four times during the summer season. And it'll be, also provide for three cycles of litter pickup in the off-season or winter months. Fortunately, it's the cost of doing business to keep this county clean. Went through Highway 120 near Walmart this morning and somebody had taken trash bags and just thrown them out on the highway. Fortunately, we have to take care and keep things up. From current, from a comparison to current rates with GDOT, this is a really good deal that we're getting. We're paying less than what the state is paying. I recommend going forward with this, this contract with Love &amp;. They provide a good service. It's generally satisfied with responsiveness and quality of the work. They will answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions. This was last bid in 2013.
Yes, sir. Correct.
And they've just agreed to keep meeting the same price since 2013.
That's correct.
The backup material that was provided said that we expected a significant increase if we should rebid this project. Do you have any estimate, estimate of what that type of increase would be?
It would be equal to the GDOT rates at least. So I can give you the percentages. I don't have them off the top of my head. I have actual numbers.
You call that a significant increase?
Yes, sir.
The reason I'm asking these questions is that some time ago, a couple of months maybe, I noticed some employees from this company picking up trash. And one specifically stood out to me as he was pushing litter farther out of his reach so he wouldn't have to pick it up. I had talked to Scott about that. Scott reached out. That's been, Scott, that's been, fixed that satisfactorily?
Yeah, we addressed it. And I'm not certain that the scenario didn't involve. We were, we had talked to the contractor after that to make sure that wasn't occurring. And I'm not sure what the final answer was, whether there was. What I had seen on some of the other routes was there was a second crew walking the lower reaches of the ditch areas following the first crew that was walking the upper reaches in some areas. I never determined if that was the case here. I hope that was the case where they were actually coming behind them and other pair of people on the lower edges. But I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't give actually the full answer on that. We'll verify. We did coach the contractor again to make sure they're not doing anything like that.
Right. We needed to reach out to them. So I think we should move forward with this. But George and Scott, do please let them know that should that be witnessed again, I'll have a whole lot of things to say when this contract comes up for revision next year.
Absolutely. I'd say we'll address any complaints or issues that come up. I've had some that come up with different contractors. And this contractor, each issue I take to them, I send them to it.
Appreciate it.
I hope that that was the case. Ron, that's what happened. I will say, they naturally, they're continuing to do the work. I think the price is good, but they've gotten real efficient. I know we've had a couple of issues in a couple of locations, but they've addressed it. And we've come back and addressed it and worked with them. And I see them working hard. I mean, these, a lot of times they're even out on Sundays working. But I do want the public to remember that we've come a long way in what we're doing with shoulder maintenance and mowing and litter pickup. When you're talking about three cuttings and we're doing, working with the state. And then we're doing three litter pickups that are not cuttings. It's like anything else we have going on with the county. It's not just one thing that can fix it. So I feel like the taxpayers are helping us out with this issue. We've come a long way with it, but we can't depend on just this to fix our litter problem. It's a problem. It's been a problem. It's going to continue to be a problem if we don't have citizens that decide to kind of get out there and pitch in. I mean, whether you can take care of what's in front of your house or a few houses down the road, not everybody's in a position where they can. And I know we're talking about litter, but that's, you know, sometimes you only get one chance for a first impression. And litter is a hot topic. It's been a hot topic for a long time. We've done a lot of things when it comes to our sign ordinance. We've done a lot of things to clean up the sides of the road. But we need, you know, the civic groups. We need your household to get out and pick up litter in front of your place and your neighbors and other people that can't do it. It's kind of like what happened in the snow issue in December. I talked to quite a few people in this room that took care of the limbs down in their yard, but they went to some neighbors' yards and took care of those because they weren't able to do it. And we've got to work together. We've got to keep litter under control. And obviously catching the person that's doing it is not the answer. That's not working. We need to work on that. But anything that you can do as a citizen to help us out with the litter situation, we appreciate it. I just appreciate the board. I appreciate the taxpayers, and I appreciate our DOT department pushing this forward. I mean, we have, from six, seven years ago, what we do now when it comes to mowing and when it comes to litter pickup is a difference night and day. So I appreciate it, Scott, and George, and your all's department. We'll just keep working to do what we can do to try to conquer this problem. Thank you all.
Been great. Appreciate the Robert Cabrera's leadership over the Heath Paulding uniform. Look, a million volunteers there. Robert's not here, but. There you are. Thank you, Robert.
He just didn't see the green shirt.
That's right. New business number three is discuss action to adopt Resolution 18-14 in order to provide for the regulation and licensing of farm winery tasting rooms. Ms. Luthman and Ms. Gibber.
It's really for me. That's why she's shaking her head. This is an ordinance that my office is working on with the Marshall's office. And we have sort of a new category in the alcohol ordinance because prior to, recently, we didn't have any farm wineries in the county. Now, we do have some that want to open. So this ordinance provides for the definition of what a farm winery is, which follows the state law. And it provides for these tasting rooms, which are onsite tasting rooms where you can offer samples of the wine that's produced or you can buy for off-premise consumption at that location. We, in order to write this ordinance, I gathered ordinances from about 14 jurisdictions to determine what's worked for some people. I talked to a few other counties as well and came up with this version. It is a separate license than any other license that we have. As I said, it goes through the Marshall's office as well. And it's going to be for the same hours as we would have retail pack of sales, which is Monday through Saturday and then Sunday afternoon. And we have a fee schedule that's going to incorporate this as well that the Marshall's have. So if y'all have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
I'd just say thank you, Lonnie, and that you have so known work very diligently on this. We hear a lot about economic development and people talk about it. This is, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of ways that the county provides infrastructure for economic development. Sometimes that's with like planning and zoning. Sometimes it's taking a look at our processes and seeing if the process for starting a business needs to change. And we worked on those, we worked on those things too. But sometimes it's with an ordinance change. So I'm excited to see we've had, we know of two, two that I know of, folks that want to start a winery. And so ordinance changes like this help us be able to move forward with that and embrace that optimism potential that the county has. So I'm excited about it.
I too am really excited about it. I appreciate Mr. Gibber complying and working with us, and I appreciate you, Lonnie, what you're doing. If I understand this correctly, I know one of them posed for, I've been out there several times, and I've lived out of them.
Yes, sir.
You've understood it correctly.
Really?
You've understood it correctly.
Yeah, thank you. All the work's been done on this one. I believe you will.
Dave, that's. All right, thank you. New business number four is discuss action to approve the professional service agreement with Jay Glenn Richardson to continue council services for the Paulding County Board of Tax Commissioners, I'm sorry, Tax Assessors. Mr. Stoudt.
Yes, sir. As you may know, we have an ongoing agreement with Mr. Richardson to provide legal counsel for the Board of Tax Assessors. We have a 12-month agreement starting back, I believe, in 2017. The Board of Commissioners came back and renewed that contract for a three-month period, which expires at the end of this month. We still have pending litigation. We will always have litigation with Board of Tax Assessors for by sending out 70,000 assessment notices, you will have unhappy people that are more than willing to have an attorney represent them. Therefore, we need representation. Our Board of Assessors has considered the contract with Mr. Richardson. And looking at both sides of the coin, the Board of Assessors have approved the recommendation of the current contract with the following changes. The changes are, number one, that would be a self-renewing contract that would automatically renew every December 31st. All right. We also wanted the, a clause put in the contract that would allow the Board of Commissioners, as well as Mr. Richardson, the option to opt out of that contract at any time by providing 60-day written notice. So either side has 60 days to opt out of this. Why the 60 days? The 60 days is really truly to give our office the opportunity to secure counsel because we have court cases that may be pending, and there's your gallopedes behind it all. And we didn't want to get into crunch time. Our Board of Assessors approved this recommendation in 5-0. And I would appreciate the Board of Commissioners's consideration in the contract as well. I'd be glad to answer any, any and all questions you have.
I'm good. Thank you. So fair raid also, great.
Yes, it is a competitive raid, yes. Thank you.
As we conclude our regular business, I don't know who I got out to the rodeo. I know Chad Hunter did back there. It's a great event. I know Mr. Eddie did. He probably rode it. But anyway, it was a good event and well-attended little family event. And I think Colonel Hunter's going to take some four-hangers out there pretty soon. Are you going to do a four-hanger?
We ended up having to cancel it, sir.
If you came by here on Saturday night, the classic cars, they started their season. So they got a lot of beautiful cars out there that, some fun things to do around here.
I saw Mr. Crow at the rodeo Saturday night.
I saw Todd, and King Burn, and I live.
That is the conclusion of regular business. For your information, there is no planning permission today at 2:00. We do have a need to go into executive session for real estate and potentially pending litigation. Do I hear a motion?
Before we have a motion to go into executive session, I just wanted to ask Mr. Chairman something. Kind of came up. I had a text message this morning from somebody. I think you were at the Capitol maybe Friday.
Yes.
Okay. Could you educate us a little bit on the, what's going on with the transportation bills that they've been talking about down to the Capitol?
I, I'm not really prepared to do that as far as, you know, we don't have any notes or anything.
Okay.
Give me a little warning. I'll either be prepared or have one of the department heads brief it since it's transportation. Have you talked to any of our representatives?
Well, I have, but I also, I got some information this morning that the governor is doing some things today or making an announcement today, if I can find it. Let's see. I just figured with you down there that that may have been something that was discussed.
There's like 20 bills that are fairly hot that affect counties. As far as singling that one out.
Okay. I have, I have heard that Governor Deal is going to announce today something with, something about a $13.6 million extra tax, extra tax dollars to expand transit in metro Atlanta. I just thought that was interesting. Somebody sent that text this morning. I just figured.
On the transit issue, and Scott Green can chime in also, it's being reorganized around the Atlanta metropolitan area where we will be combined in with Cobb County for transit issues and considerations in the future. And, you know, there are other sections around metropolitan area where they'll work together. And we'll be working with Cobb County if this passes. So there are new zones. You know, it'll involve, Alex is sitting on the board, as will the chairman from Cobb County, to discuss what our opportunities are there and how we would be able to take advantage of some of that money that's available. Do you have any comments, Scott?
You're on the board?
The way it's structured, I haven't been in board meetings, but if this all passes, then Cobb. then Cobb and Paulding would be together and both chairmen would be required to attend regular board meetings.
Got anything to add?
I'll just add that we've been reading the bills as they change and through the various committees and go back to court between the House and the Senate. It's been a lot, it's kind of hard to keep up with what exactly is going on, but the basic thing, what transit is, the setting up of a transit governance agency where the counties come together and it's almost like a rebranding of transit and a grown-up organization. And then I think within that is some mechanisms for counties to go out to the voters and put out a transit splotch type of method of funding, to increase funding for transit. I think that's a voluntary thing. I don't know if there's anything that would be placed on counties alone without the counties approving it.
And as far as CRETA and current structure, some of that again will be changed into this new, this new organization.
I just did a Google search. It does say that Deal has a surprise announcement today. He's amending the state budget to add $13.6 million extra dollars to expand transit in metro Atlanta. He's also creating a $100 million bond program for future transit. But they say, like, he hasn't been voted on yet. Do we know who that vote is?
Well, we only got three, one day, two days left?
So see, his name was here.
What was that about the $100 million?
$100 million bond.
Okay.
That's what he said. I just like to go forward.
Okay.
I'll share with you the information from my notes today.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to give you an update this afternoon. Looking at the latest version of the bill. I don't know that 13 million is really an expansion. I'd probably be furthering some study efforts and privatization. $13 million doesn't go very far for transit. But bonding certainly could put some money into it. Thank you.
13 million, but 100 million could go that much more. You've got notes from me down there?
Yeah.
I would love to, I would love to know about that.
ACCG puts out a weekly, and they have the Facebook thing on Friday at 10:30, so that's another good source for our whole board to plug into as we go through the whole session. Of course, like you already said, we're almost at the end of it now. So without any other remarks, is there a motion to go into executive session for real estate potential and pending litigation?
The only thing that I would want to say is that's an important topic for Paulding County. And if there's been discussion and meetings about it and you have anything firsthand, we just, what do you do? We need to know that and get that information. That's, that's, it's important and that's kind of why we have Frank and Scott so that you can go through that. So, but I appreciate it. I'd love to see your notes as soon as possible today. And I'll make a motion to go into executive session for real estate potential and pending litigation. And I'd also like to add personnel. Don't know that it'll be needed, but I'd like to add personnel to that, please. That's my motion.
We have a motion to go into executive sessions, they're second.
Second.
Second. My Commissioner Crowe, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will go into executive session. Executive session is complete and we will re-enter the regular session here and report that no actions taken in executive session. Any other comments or information before we request to adjourn? Hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn by Commissioner Crowe, they're second.
Second.
Second. My Commissioner Townell, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Stand adjourned.